Hope you join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic. One nation, five individuals with liberty and justice for all. I will now accept nominations for a chairperson of the school committee.
Dr. McGee.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Paul Bourgier, the chairman of the school committee.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, I declare the nominations closed. I will now take a roll call based on Mr. Burke's nomination.
Dr. McGee. Dr. McGee, do you need a second?
Yes.
I will second. This is Lynn Kapiskis. I will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskis. So I will now take a roll, a vote to approve Paul Bourgier as chairperson of the Wensocket School Committee. Mr. Bourgier?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskis?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Bourgier has been nominated chairperson of Wensocket School Committee.
Thank you, everyone.
I will turn, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I will now accept nominations for vice chairperson of the Wensocket School Committee. I nominate Donald G. Burke for vice chair. Is there a second?
Lynn Kapiskis, I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskis. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I declare the nominations closed. Dr. McGee, would you give us a roll call to approve Donald G. Burke as the vice chair of the Wensocket School Committee?
Yes. Chairman Bourgier?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskis?
Yes.
If you're talking to me, yes. It's very, very in and out. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Burke, as vice chair of the school committee.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your support. Thank you.
Dr. McGee, we're finding that you're breaking, you're breaking up as you're speaking. Just to let you know.
Plus, you're also freezing.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure why. This, it was working fine earlier this, this evening. So just let me know if you continue to have difficulty.
Okay. Mr. Notariani, is there anyone who has signed up for public comment for good and welfare tonight?
No, chairman.
Okay, so then we can go on to recognitions and announcements, and I'll turn it over to Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the school committee. Congratulations to the school debate team for their performances at the first Urban Debate League tournament of the 2020-2021 season. Despite a late start this season and a smaller number of students participating than usual. Haters.
Sorry, Dr. McGee.
Junior debater.
Didn't understand anything you're saying.
I know sometimes it helps. I know sometimes it helps when I'm on the meetings with the kids in the school. If they sign off really quickly and then jump back on, sometimes that reinstates the connection.
Let me, let me try that. Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
How about now? Can you hear me? Is this better?
Right now, it's better, Dr. McGee. Yes.
Okay, let, let me start over again. I apologize. So congratulations to the Wensocket High School debate team for their performances at the first Urban Debate League tournament of the 2020-21 season. Despite a late start this season and a smaller number of students participating than usual, Wensocket debaters captured three prestigious awards. Junior debater Parker Penn debating solo garnered the first place. Tabagando and Julie De Allen Carr debated together, captured the first place and second place speaker awards respectively. Congratulations to all members of the debate team. The debate team meets Tuesdays and Thursdays from two to three to four. With their Google Classroom, and new members are always welcome to the team. I also want to thank Mr. Simonini, who is our Wensocket High School debate team coach advisor. Yeah, I'd like to recognize it's very nice, positive feedback about our, our school district. And I was very fortunate recently to receive two emails. One email from a parent regarding one of. I'd like to do that. This is from Mrs. Jessica Counts. Says, "Good morning, Dr. McGee. Just wanted to take a minute and let you know what a great asset Mr. Costantino is. My son Ben, who is a ninth grader at Wensocket High School, has had, having success 101 this first quarter. I completely understand that some teachers are not totally at ease with online learning teaching. The technology is very new to some. Well, Mr. Costantino is very comfortable on camera. He has kept my son's attention. He has to be last. Clearly, his subject matter is interesting, but it's way more than that. I have listened to many, I've listened in many times. He has quite detailed conversations about many in-depth topics. So I'm very sensitive. I'm very impressed with his attention to the kids. All of these people working outside their comfort zone, and he is crushing it. Just thought I'd share that. The next email comes from a student. And, and it's, it's great hearing from, from families and parents, but it's even better hearing from our students. And this, this email comes from Brody Ramsey, who is a student at Villanova Middle School. And he says, "Hi, Dr. McGee. I hope this email finds you well. I just wanted to let you know that for quarter one, I made honors. I am thankful for the support from my family and my teachers. I want to let you know that my teachers in Team Princeton are doing awesome. Even though in tough times like we are in right now, they are coming through and going above and beyond to help us students. I've learned so much from them. They have made me progress as a person. I speak highly of them to my family. I also want to acknowledge Mr. Ailing. He is a great teacher for the I Explore program. I'm glad my family and I supported him and his team at this committee meeting. He's taught me and other students new career paths and to explore new places to live. Mr. Scalanti is also an awesome teacher. He always tries to help us students appreciate art and to understand assignments. I am no Bob Ross, but I appreciate him." We all, we all know, we all remember Bob Ross. Mr. Murphy is funny. He teaches us every, everyday living and how to, how to take care of ourselves and others. No drugs, no smoking, no vaping, sickness, COVID-19, et cetera. He doesn't just tell us these things, but how it could affect us. Music to my parents' ears. Overall, you have a great team at Villanova Middle School. Thank you, Brody Ramsey.
All right.
And lastly, I just want to wish everyone out there in the, in the Wensocket Education Department and in the Wensocket School community a very healthy, happy, and restful holiday season. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Does any school committee member want to address Dr. McGee for recognitions and announcements?
I would like to.
Vice Chair Burke?
I'm sorry. I just want to, I'm sure, we all want to do this, but I also want to echo Dr. McGee's remarks about Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everybody as well.
Ms. Costa, did you, did you have something?
Yes, I actually wanted to recognize one of the teachers at Leo Savoy. Ms. McCutchen's. She is a wonderful teacher, and she has a lot of patience. One of my twins requires a little extra attention when it comes to learning. And she is excellent when it comes to dealing with her and getting her to refocus her attention. Because getting a seven-year-old, one of them, let alone 20 of them on the same computer screen, to focus their time and their energy and to stay focused, I think that's really real, like, a lot of commitment. And I just, I think it goes above how Ms. McCutchen's does it. I think regardless, a lot of these teachers do deserve recognition, but Ms. McCutchen's does go above and beyond. And she does hand out extra material to make sure her children in her classrooms are prepared for learning and the extra stuff that they may need. So I just wanted to give her recognition and make sure she does get recognized for that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Costa. I also want to piggyback on what Ms. Costa said. I want to congratulate our administrators, our teachers, and our parents and students for working so hard, not only this past year and this year. And I see Mrs. Coder is in attendance. And I want to, I want to thank you, Donna, for all the Facebook posts that you make. They're very helpful. They're very informative. And I know I've gotten remarks from parents that they really appreciate all the posts that you make. So again, thank you so much. I want to wish also everyone a happy holidays and please be safe and pay good care. Any other member of the school committee want to address recognition and announcements? Then I'll make a motion, receive and place on file the recognition and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Bourgier?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskis?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, we'll go on to the approval minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the November 18, 2020 open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Are there any corrections, amendments to the minutes? Dr. McGee, please, roll call.
Chairman Bourgier?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskis?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
I'll abstain because I was not here for that meeting.
Okay, I think I'm supposed to do that same thing, actually. To be honest, I think that.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve, to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Does any school committee member want to take any of the items in the consent agenda? Basically, there are purchases and transfers since we had no field trips and no homeschooling requests. Hearing none, Dr. McGee, please, roll call.
Chairman Bourgier?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskis?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. McGee, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. So I have a, I'm going to begin, as I usually do, with personnel actions and personnel matters, I should say. So I just want the committee to know that we, between the last school committee meeting two weeks ago and, and this meeting, we have added a total of 29 stipend positions. For those who, who are not sure what a, what a stipend position is, it's, it's a position that we add in the district where a teacher or staff member receives money in, in addition to what they would be receiving fiscally for their, for a teaching position or a position that they would have within the school department. Of those, of those 29 stipend positions, they are, they are funded either through our Project Aware grant, which is, which is a grant that focuses on, on mental health, social, emotional services and supports for our students. We have four of those stipend positions out of IDEA, which comes out of our special education title funds. We also have 16 of those that come out of Title II, which is our professional development federal monies. And three are local. Of those three, we have nurse, two nurse secretaries as part of, of those, as well as a girls' basketball coach. So there are three of those are coming out of the, the local budget, which are already budgeted for. I don't know if there are any questions of, of those personnel additions from the committee. If there are not, I will move on to my second agenda item, which is an update on school reopening.
Oh, Dr. McGee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
The, the coaches that have been, have been engaged, is that just in case we do have the sports?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. We, I'm going to speak to, to the Interscholastic League and our, our sports teams when I get to the, the reopening and the distance learning update. Yes, to answer your question, you are correct.
Very good.
Thank you. So I'm going to begin, I have about six agenda items under the update. So I'm going to, I'm going to first start with information that the Commissioner of Education released yesterday, a unified 2020-2021 Rhode Island school calendar update. As the committee knows and as the community is aware, we made the decision to go fully virtual prior to Thanksgiving. And that is scheduled tentatively to last through, or has been scheduled to tentatively last through New Year's with the, with the goal of returning in the, in the, the different types of models on Monday, January 4th. The, the commissioner, however, has released this updated calendar to districts, which basically says that there will be at least a staggered return beginning on the 7th of January. And by the 15th, all, 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 all students, or basically the, the, the model that districts are currently using or were currently using prior to our own pause would be the 15th. So right now, we're, we're looking at not returning on the 4th, but potentially returning on Thursday, January 7th. So my plan, and I'm, and I'm going to be communicating with the administrators and, and other staff here in the district, is to see how things are looking, which, which was, it was, was part of the, the initial plan prior to going fully virtual before Thanksgiving, to see what the numbers are looking like in Rhode Island and what the numbers are looking like here in Wensocket. I plan on making that decision early next week, prior to us going out on our holiday recess. So that information I will share with the, the committee and with the community early next week. But again, I just wanted to let the committee and the community know that this was a calendar that was just released by the commissioner. I've had some communication with my superintendent colleagues across the state. And some districts were and are still planning on staying virtual for those first two full weeks of January. Others were sort of taking a wait and see, you know, take on it to see, as I stated a few minutes ago, what the numbers are looking like in the state and in each individual community as to whether or not students would return on January 7th. So I just wanted to update the committee on, on that important piece of information. Secondly, I wanted to notify the committee and, and the community that there are going to be four districts across the state. Central Falls, South Kingstown, Lincoln, and Providence, which are going to be piloting a comprehensive K through 12 asymptomatic testing plan. Central Falls has already begun this, and the other three districts, I think, are in the process right now of, of implementing it. So what this means is that those four districts, with the assistance of the Department of Health, are establishing opportunities for students, teachers, and staff to be tested on site, which means that they are coordinating opportunities for, you know, families to schedule for their, for their children who are asymptomatic, not those who are symptomatic, at the school to be tested. And this, the, the four districts that are piloting this are receiving assistance from the Department of Health. So there are actual Department of Health professionals who are coming in and are providing the testing. And it's, and it's the, it's the 48-hour tests that, that those people, that those students and those staff are receiving. Beyond the four pilot districts, they are asking or actually giving the, the opportunity for districts to choose whether they wish to or not to also provide the comprehensive asymptomatic testing. Unfortunately, beyond the four pilot districts, districts would have to, you know, establish the, the logistics themselves and would also have to staff it themselves. So we wouldn't be receiving any assistance from the Department of Health. So that would be up to, you know, our school nurses and other personnel in the district to provide the, the testing. So this is a conversation that I'm going to be having. This, we're going to, who is our lead school nurse teacher in the district. The, our, is Renee De Senzo, who is a school nurse teacher at Leo Savoy. So I'm going to be meeting with them this week, on Friday, to talk about what this could look like. District is in the state necessarily going to be doing this. One of the concerns that I've heard from other districts that are not part of the pilot is, is the concern that districts are going to have to, you know, provide this. It's a, we're going to have, I'm going to have to talk to our, our, our school nurses to get a sense of, of where they stand on this. So I guess I'll be sharing more information with the committee after I meet and with Diane this week on Friday. I'd also like to talk briefly about substitutes. As you all know, the, the Department of Education and Governor's. It's happened for quite a while now that there, there are cadres of substitutes that are, that are, that are being provided to districts across the state so that they can, you know, provide coverage for teachers throughout long-term. Family farm, especially in our case, long-term. We have been working with the Highlander Institute. Highlander Institute, they were supposed to provide us with 10 substitutes weeks ago. They're doing their very best. They, they've been training. 10 folks who are supposed to come to us for a variety of reasons, either before they completed their training or after they completed their training, they changed their mind, you know, again, for a variety of reasons. Some are just afraid to, to go out to the schools and sub because, you know, of the numbers of COVID cases. So unfortunately, to date, we still have zero. We're going to be working, continuing to work with the Highlander Institute to try to, you know, get more subs moving forward. So, and I know, you know, again, that there is, there, there's a lot of frustration, and, and I can understand it, you know, among families and, and parents out there. But I just want to, just to reassure them, we are. And to try to procure as, as any substitutes and as many substitutes as, as we can get. So we're, we're going to continue working at it. You know, Ms. Dargan, our Human Resources Director, has been working hard with the Highlander Institute and just trying to bring in, you know, as many substitutes as we possibly can. That's what we're doing on that front. Mr. Chairman, you asked earlier about the coaching, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the Interscholastic League. I had a conversation today with your director, who stated to me that the Rhode Island Interscholastic League is anticipating at some point in January, beginning of bringing back some of our all-sport, which have been postponed. Those are boys and girls' ball, boys and girls' indoor track, and freshman basketball. And at the middle schools, it would be boys and girls' basketball. So we're, we're still hoping that, you know, they, they will return time after January 1st. There, there is no date. Right now, due to the governor's pause, there, there is no practicing or, or there, there are no captains practices here in Wensocket. So we're, we're just sort of on a, on a wait and see when it comes.
You're breaking up, Dr. McGee.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. If, if we continue a log-off.
It's, it's very uneven. It, it's very uneven. I don't know if it's my internet or.
Yeah, I don't know why.
It, it, it's really like.
Your picture, your, your, the picture is fuzzy and you're, you're freezing. And like Sarah said, the, your voice is intermittent.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to log off again, Mr. Chairman.
Fine. Sarah, you're coming in nice and clear now.
Well, that's a relief.
I think you might have fed your computer. That's why it had some.
Yeah, I had a little snack.
There we go.
How's that?
I fortified myself.
No.
You see?
It's, your, your image is frozen.
But to add this to the agenda of the tech subcommittee.
Now, lucky I'm missing Notariani right as we speak.
He's remaining silent, which is.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. I appreciate that. I'll be adding that to the agenda.
Thank you. You're welcome. Always working.
If we see Dr. McGee in his car, I'll know why.
Al, can you take care of this?
Yeah, well, we're all picking on you, Al.
I know you're all looking at me, and all I get to say is I hope you put a work order in for this. And I hope he's got all the details, too. We need, got to make sure we get an ID, address, email address.
Don't forget the asset tag.
Forget the asset. That's right. Thank you, Mrs. Coder. Don't forget the asset. Forget the asset, that's right. Thank you, Mrs. Cudicant. Don't forget the asset tag, yes.
Is that better?
Yes, Dr. McGee.
You better put a work order in.
I think I.
It's frozen.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna waste any more time because who knows how much more time I'm gonna have.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can everyone hear?
Sometime.
So I'm gonna, um. Can everybody hear me?
Right now, yes.
Okay.
It's still ringing out.
Speak faster.
Okay. This has never happened to me before in a full committee meeting.
Blame Al.
I'm so gonna hear about this tomorrow.
Yeah, I already have, yeah.
I'm taking tomorrow off.
I never get flustered, and I'm bordering on it right now.
It looks better now.
I'm good.
This is terrible. Now you guys get to experience what all the teachers and the parents go through on a daily basis.
That's correct. That's why they're our heroes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna shut, I'm gonna shut this down.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the first time this has ever happened to me. But I'm gonna move on to. The end item I have under school reopening is I'd like to recognize some teachers and some across the district. They are continuing to do during distance learning. I'm gonna start with Villanova Middle School. Mr. Swain, who is a seventh-grade science teacher, who shares the weekly swan mail. Includes the schedule for the upcoming week, past due assignments, upcoming assignments, and other school health night dates. Mr. Gagnon, who's a sixth-grade social studies teacher, who uses championship races to motivate his students to increase their engagement. And Lexia Leach. Also, Mrs. Marandola, school counselor, who has met with the National Junior Honor Society members on our concerns projects, peer tutoring program. Also, the leadership team for leading their school improvement meetings on engaging students in ways that help improve scores. At Leo Savoy Elementary School, teachers have held holiday spirit weeks as well as slide decks on various holiday traditions. And also, who's from the Wensocket Elks Club, and the Elks Club with Mr. Turgeon's leadership have donated well over 300 coats and for needy families in Wensocket. At Hamlet Middle School, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Zabo, who is the National Junior Honor Society Advisor. Students put together slides that addressed bullying. I'd also like to thank Citizens Pothea Campus, grade five teachers, and real-life heroes in the community. SBE Department at the elementary lab, who have put together a 12-days-of-fitness workout. Who shared a short book form with asking questions for parents so they could best utilize their minutes with the teacher in going over things that would be very beneficial for the parent during the conference. And that is all I have for my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I will make a motion to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Ms. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on.
Vice Chair Burke, please.
You know, a lot of those recognitions of teachers that Dr. McGee went through and talking about various schools, it was intermittent. And I don't, I don't think everybody heard the whole story. And I would like to make a suggestion that Dr. McGee put that information on his community notes that he puts, that he puts online, just so he could talk about the schools and the teachers that he mentioned, because I don't think we've heard clearly half of them. So just a suggestion.
That's a good idea. Dr. McGee, would you do that? Just put the names that, all the folks that you've recognized in your superintendent's notes or special memo that you send out to the community.
I will do that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, we'll go into the school subcommittee reports. This morning, the facilities subcommittee met. Vice Chair Burke and I were in attendance, and we covered various topics. And I'll ask Ms. Natariani just to give us an overview of what we covered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as Chairman stated, we convened this morning, and we discussed our COVID-19 preparations, ensuring that we have enough personal protective equipment for our staff when we resume in-person learning on January 4th. We then talked about facilities projects. Specifically, we talked about the high school boiler replacement, which is in progress. The asbestos abatement's been handled, and the new boilers will be starting to be installed next week along with the related piping. We talked about the Crete Tech Center at Main Office boilers and the status we're at there, which we're waiting for a quote to replace the boilers there. We talked about the HVAC systems and boiler controls throughout the district and updated the subcommittee on the fact that we have outdated control systems, which is something that we need to address so that we can have proper temperature and ventilation control in those buildings that have HVAC systems. We had a brief discussion about plumbing in the district. Our plumbing work orders are in the process of being completed. We have 12 outstanding work orders. At Savoy Elementary School, it's a long-awaited project. We finally get to replace the Bradley sinks in the two public bathrooms where the students go for classes. So on the first and second floor, we used to have Bradley sinks, which date back decades. And we finally replaced those with brand-new sinks and updated the urinals in both of the boys' lavatories and did some other ancillary plumbing issues with the sinks there. And we also talked about playground repairs, the equipment for Harris Elementary School. If the committee recalls, we replaced the mulch, and we ordered parts, and we're waiting for the replacement parts for the Harris playground. And then we'll then move on to the Pothea and the Burnin' playgrounds. Under, next item was the resumption of the five-year capital plan. As the committee recalls, due to the pandemic, we paused our capital planning process. We are gonna resume that process with a submission date anticipated sometime in the fall of 2021. The capital plan will address many of the needed facilities updates that have been postponed over the years. We also talked about winter preparations. All of our plow trucks have been fit and ready to go for tomorrow's plowing. I'll be joining the plowing crew in the morning to assess where we're at with the buildings and make sure that everything's ready to go. Snowblowers have been prepped, gasoline has been delivered, ice melt and such. Even though the buildings are closed, we do have some activity, principals going in and out, and we do have testing going on for some of our student populations in the district. We had a prior discussion about exploring for contracting out substitute custodians. At this point, I'd like to thank Ms. Dargan and her efforts, because we have a pool of candidates we'll be interviewing to fill positions and potentially have some substitutes on hand if everything works out okay. Again, it's pending interviews, but just wanna say thanks to the HR department for that. It's been very helpful. And then in terms of transportation, the Transportation Department Durham School Services has not been transporting any students because we're distance learning, although I do anticipate their assistance in the upcoming testing scenario that we have with the weighted testing for our multilingual learners. That's something that they're gonna partner with us on because we have to bring our students back to test in person per Rides guidelines. So they will be transporting students normally on January 4th if we resume in-person learning, and then they will also, in addition to that, be transporting our students to need to test. That concludes my update, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And our next meeting is scheduled for January 11th, which is a Monday, which will be in the morning as usual. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a facilities update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke.
Chairman Bourget.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yeah.
Ms. Kapiskas?
Yeah.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Le.
Yes.
Next, I will ask Mrs. Kapiskas to give us an update on CLAC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you want me to do that orally, considering the internet issues? Or would you prefer I just submit my notes to everyone? I can do it either way, or both?
Why don't you do it orally? Because you're coming in nice and clear.
Okay, and if there's a problem, just let me know, and I share them with everyone anyway.
Sure.
The CLAC last met on December 2nd, 2020. It began at 6 o'clock. It was very well attended by parents and a lot of the staff and administrators of the school department, which we're very grateful and we thank you. As usual, everybody introduced themselves. We indicated that Dr. D'Oliver, when we were present due to her death and her family, we extended sympathy for her. Dr. McGee gave us an update on distance learning, as well as his plan to return at that time on January 4th. He explained the blocks behind that decision. He also advised parents that parent-teacher competence would be occurring virtually on December 10th for the high school, middle school, and local school, December 17th for the elementary school, and exactly how that would be scheduled. He also spoke about how a report card should be issued across all levels, and it would intend to be virtually always available to everyone, to make sure their contact information, because their emails were correct. Ms. Morell gave an update on evaluations and IEP meetings. We discussed the pecking order. If you're having a problem with that, it was to reach out to your classroom future and then to your principal, and if you got nowhere, then reach out to Special Education, to inform us that DocuHub, a new electronic signing system to the district, was being used to permit everyone to participate in signing of the IEP without actually touching the documents. He advised that evaluation would now be proceeding. They'd been held off on pretty much since March because we had to set up safety protocols. Those protocols had been approved by Dr. McGee on the day of our meeting, which was December 2nd, and evaluations were going to begin again. A parent indicated her son was having difficulty accessing his computer, and she requested evaluations, but the requests had not been addressed. She was meeting with the building principal on the 10th, and Dr. McGee said he would reach out to her. Another parent indicated that with regard to the transfer program, a lot of parents had difficulty because their children were getting stressed and stimulated. The parent in particular asked if it was possible for the teacher to unmute students who were responsible for stimulating some of the other students in the Google Meet. And although that is possible, the problem, as Ms. Morrell explained, was that some of them would not be able to figure out how to unmute themselves again to participate. And Ms. Morell and Ms. Windsor both indicated that they would reach out to the social worker and flow the O P system, which would present escalating problems. Apparently, that has been brought on through all the transfer program. We had a presenter at our meeting. His name is Brian Wilk. He's the author of a book, A Lifetime of Lessons for the Parent of a Special Needs Child. He's the parent of an adult child with special needs, and he spoke about how at the beginning of his journey, he found a companion book available to help him navigate all the help and assistance that his son would need to navigate the world. So he decided to write one. He has a book giveaway program, and he, Ms., one of the parents, Mr. Spirro, was nominated by another parent and received his book. He indicated some of the information that was available. His book about evil acts, evil accounts, which is something we call, we call it CLAC. He also spoke about disability, receiving social security when one parent is working and one parent has not worked but been a primary caregiver, that there's a loophole, so to speak, in terms of that parent being able to collect social security at the moment. He also spoke about the importance of planning ahead for your children to make sure that there's gonna be a seamless transition to something happen to you, and not forgetting to take care of ourselves as parents, because we have a tendency to lose ourselves taking care of our children. He advised us how to purchase the book, and asked us if we purchased it, if we'd please take notes and pass it on to another special needs parent who could benefit. He shared his email with anyone who was interested in nominating another parent, or to just reach out to him, nominating another parent to get his book. Superintendent had no further announcements. Ms. Morell advised, again, the update with regard to evaluation. The parent expressed concern that her child had not been evaluated, although she was in the process of being evaluated in March, but we wanted to discontinue. They were doing their best to put that child in ASAP. Ms. Windsor advised us that Tracy Bellevue, the transfer teachers, had been named one of the National Disability Awareness Month Success Story winners, and that Allison News also, I'm not sure if that, I apologize, from Wensocket, had also been named, and we have a roughly extended our congratulation. I have nothing to say as school committee liaison, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:57.
The committee member has a comment or question for Ms. Kapiskas. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a CLAC update. Is there a second?
Second.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
So if you're saying Ms. Kapiskas, yes.
Yes. Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Next, we'll go on to the ASLO update. Ms. Kapiskas, please.
This was the first ASLO meeting I'd ever attended. It occurred on December 27th. Meeting was called to order at 6 o'clock. The meeting was led by Rania Adja. A meeting was led by Rania Adja, the mother of a resident coordinator from the Savoy School Department. I'm going to mess up these names. And Laida Leyana Tiano, the school department liaison and ESL coordinator, yeah, assessor. Attendees were invited to ask their questions during the meeting or to put them in the chat. Another significant number, again, when Socket leadership was present. Mr. Leclair and I were present from the school committee and also present was from the city council Valerie Gonzalez. PESLO meets quarterly throughout the year. It is designed for parents and families of multiple language learners and our English is a second language partner of the school department. English language learners are offered support at the following schools and districts. Bothier Citizens, Coleman, Globe, Harris, One Socket Middle School, Villa and One Socket High School. Parents were given suggestions as to how to promote learning through technology. Parents were advised to create a learning space in the home, preferably not a bedroom or a bed, by area with distractions. Not easy with more than one student, different grade levels. Follow the usual school schedule to ensure on time. Each would attend all their classes, not skipping classes throughout the day. Have your children get to sleep early. Check in with your children about their day, ask them questions about the Google Meets. And the leadership recommended that parents conduct those, I won't say interrogations, conversations with your children in their native language to keep growing the vocabulary links between their native language and the English language. And parents should show excitement to hear what their children are learning about and what their children are excited about. Parents were told that the communication systems used through the school department, Dojo, in the elementary schools and remind in the middle and high schools all have available multiple language translation services. If your language is not on there, please contact Rania and she will try to find another program that can nail one of your native language. Parents were asked to look from middle school and high school, look for the Skyward for checking on their child's information. It was recommended that if you didn't have your parent login information, you contact guidance to get that information. I did not know this information and it was quite shocking to me. Our MLL students number approximately 700 in our district. That's approximately 12% of our student population. I had no idea the number was that high. Suspected it was high, but very high. They come from such diverse locations as Africa, Brazil, Laos, China, Colombia, Ecuador, Mexico, Vietnam, Puerto Rico, Dominican Republic, Philippines and Guatemala. Parents were reminded that attendance matters. Students who attend school regularly tend to get better grades, stay out of trouble, graduate and find better jobs. Whether on distance learning or in-person, attendance is just as important. Which virtual school day is a real school day. Information was provided to parents about various community programs that can provide assistance to parents in the area that the system can be provided. Programs through CCF, REVOL, CCA, One Socket Education Health Services and the Center for Southeast Asians were detailed. Dr. McGee again reminded parents about parent teacher conferences, December 10th and December 17th by appointment only. That parents would be receiving a notice to schedule their appointment. He also provided information that the WIDA access assessment for MLL students would be administered between January 4th, May 21st and February 3rd, 2021. The manner will be determined by what school looks like at that point. Expect more information upon our return. And as Ms. Norriani and just informed us, it will be in person and transportation will be provided for those who usually qualify. The next PESLO meeting is scheduled for February 3rd, 2021 and will likely be virtual. And the link, if shared with me, will be shared with the committee and I was told it would be shared with me. Parents were asked to share this information with anybody that thought might come in useful. Parents raised some issues, which we dealt with promptly. When asked to explain what the protocols if a parent has a problem. Parent was told to reach out to the ESL teacher first and the home run teacher of no success and the principal. And then if none, still no success to reach out to the MLL office, to Rania and her staff. There were some parents that were concerned that their children didn't have internet or computer access until late in October. And they were concerned that their grades would be affected. Rania told parents in that situation to please reach out to her and she did do her best to assist and that there was no reason the child should be penalized. I asked what happens if a child was assigned to a school that didn't offer ESL-supported education. And Rania explained the process that MLL students, if they indicate their home languages other than English, WED reaches out to them to determine who needs services currently through provisional virtual screenings, but they'll be reassessed in person once it's deemed safe to do so. If the student is referred, services will vary based upon the level of need. They were assigned to classrooms with an ESL-certified educator to provide supports. At the middle school, students are in a sheltered model, which is geared towards the proficiency level in English. At the high school level, their English class is their ELL class coupled with a regular core content class within ELL certified educator. If your child's home elementary school does not have an ELS, ESL-certified instructor, it would typically be placed in a self-contained classroom or maybe bused to another school to provide the needed services. Another parent asked a question. Rania expressed concerns about privacy and said she would speak to her after the meeting. Dr. McGee then asked the parents present if there was anything that we could do as a district to help. And parent indicated that they were having problems because obviously school in-person is different from distance learning and using Google Translate to help their child is difficult as best because they don't speak English. Parent asked if there was a better way to reach parents and students. Another parent asked why there can't be a transition period for their children where instruction is provided to them in their native language to allow them to successfully move forward into a conventional ESL model. Rania indicated that she continues to look for transitional newcomer programs, but research does not support their use and the negative impact of separating these students from the English-speaking peers. At the most, Rania might offer a program for no more than one month. But during that month, content instruction would have to be mixed with ELL instructions so students do not fall behind in content area. She's also looking for programs to teach more basic skills like how to use a computer when you've never even seen one before. The meeting was adjourned at 7:07 PM. And again, I'd like to reiterate that the next meeting is February 3rd, 2021. And I encourage those who haven't attended one to join us. It's a very interesting and informative meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Kapiskas. Any committee members would like to ask Ms. Kapiskas any questions or make any comment? Then I will make a motion to receive and place on file a PESLO update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa. Back to McGee, will call.
Chairman Bourget. Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Costa. Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll go into the conferences and discussions. I'll ask Mr. Norriani to give us the technology facilities update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So attached you'll have the standard memo that we issued to the committee along with some reports out of our work order system. So beginning with the technology update, you'll find our standard report, all the statistics that we're able to track in our work order system. I provided the committee with a 90-day capture. Traditionally, we do 30 days, but for the benefit of the new committee members, I'm giving you the chart for the last 90 days in terms of status of work orders along with the satisfaction report. So if you were to look at the report, you will see that we've had well over 2,000 work orders in the last 90 days, which I can share with the committee is high comparison to our traditional work order reports. And that's mostly due to distance learning and the additional services that we need to provide such as hotspots, connection issues to homes, providing new Chromebooks. We're now one-to-one in the district, so every child here in the district has a Chromebook issued to them. And it's a slightly different game, if you will, in terms of providing support with our families being at home. And there's multiple obstacles to providing that support at a distance. So as you can see through the report, it's color quoted. Everything in blue means it's a work order that's been closed. Green is declined. Yellow is duplicate. And just to give you an example, well, first declined is something that may have been requested that we don't do in One Socket. Or it could be a request that we can't comply with, whether it deals with a piece of equipment that we may not own, where they would like a certain type of piece of equipment that we don't provide here. Or it could be something, a request that doesn't follow our guidelines, policies and procedures. And those are all documented in the work order system. Duplicate work orders, many times a result from maybe multiple teachers at the secondary level. A multiple teacher reporting the same issue that might be occurring or going on. Then if you move down the line, we have work orders that are assigned. We have work orders that are in progress, assigned meaning that they're assigned to a technician to start. And progress means that they're in the process of working on them. Awaiting input of a work order that they may or may not be requesting something where we need additional information. So we email back to our customer, which would either be a teacher or household. Resolved is when we immediately fix something before it moves to the closed stage. Waiting for vendor, self-explanatory, waiting for a vendor to perform some type of task associated with it. New is a new request and that is all the categories. So that is the work order status for the last 90 days from September through December. As the committee can see, in September, when we first resumed school around the 14th, we had the largest number of requests coming in. That's traditional, although they were much higher than normal. And we've seen, sensing them kind of table off. The second report relating to technology is the Satisfaction Report. And this is the available feedback. When a work order is submitted, at its completion, the work order system sends out an automated email requesting feedback from the individual that requested the support. I've precluded the non-answered status because that means that we didn't get any response whatsoever. So the report in front of you reflects either satisfied or dissatisfied in terms of the work orders. And again, they're color coordinated. Green is satisfied. We like to see lots of green in my department. Yellow is not satisfied. And based on the numbers and percentages that I've calculated out, for the most part, we're in pretty good shape in terms of the feedback we're getting from our teachers. Many times when we get a not satisfied, it's due to, again, where we declined something. For example, we use a particular brand document camera called Ipivo. There's other brands out there and I know some teachers prefer to have what's called an Elmo brand document camera. And that would be where they would request an Elmo brand and we'd say you get an Ipivo. And it's not they're not satisfied with the work performed, they're just not satisfied with the fact that we're providing a different name brand device. There are occasions where work is performed and there's a misunderstanding or there was a miscommunication or what we thought was fixed wasn't fixed. And that's something that we will address. I have a report that I get every day that I go through and find out, you know, where they were dissatisfied and what we can do to remedy the issue. And they usually receive an email from me. That's what I have for the technology, work order reports that come out of our system. I could stop there if there's any questions. In addition to the work order reports, we are in the process of upgrading staff.
I actually do have a question about the computers. So if you get a computer repaired, because I actually have one for one of the kids that I have that are in school, that we got one back, but we still have the old computer. Do I just give that back to Leo Savoy?
At some point, so at some point, so that's one of the things that's challenging right now in the environment we're working in. Obviously, I mean, I'm not telling you something you don't know. So we're just saying hold on to them for now. And when we resume in-person learning, we will collect them. If your family or your children or any family or child that is doing full distance learning, for now, we're telling them to hold on to them. We will collect them at some point. But I'm more concerned about making sure. So it's very difficult with the number of students we have and the breakage and everything to get them out. So our focus is trying to get Chromebooks out to the students and hotspots out to students that need them as quickly as possible. And I'm not wasting any of our technicians' time on trying to get them back because it's more important that they have the Chromebook and the laptop so they can learn versus getting the broken one back right now. At some point, we will, but our focus is on getting them out there so learning can continue. But that's a good, very good question, good point on that, yes. In addition to the work order system, we're in the process right now of upgrading staff laptops. So the Technology Committee and the School Committee voted. And we purchased additional Chromebooks, the newest version Chromebooks, which have a slightly larger screen, a little more capacity to help with the distance learning. The original platform and Google, the original platform that we were using in the spring. So for those of you that were familiar with this, in the spring, Google worked much better than in the fall. And Google pushed out an update. And we're still not quite sure what they did, but whatever they did definitely degraded the service performance that we had grown to expect from Google. Because in the fall, we didn't hear about any of this. And now, unfortunately for Dr. McGee, I apologize for this. He's experiencing something right now, which we will remedy tomorrow, sure thing. But that being said, the, this is kind of some of the things that we're experiencing here with the Google platform in the fall. And the newer Chromebooks seem to be working a little bit better with the platform. So we're going to be issuing those along with an Apple pen, an iPad, a Bluetooth speaker and a webcam. So one of the other things that our teachers or challenges our teachers have is with respect to presenting to our students, which I think one of the members alluded to earlier, which is you have a Chromebook, you're right in front of it, there's a webcam. We're going to supplement that with an iPad, similar to what other districts have done, where they have two devices going at once. One to be able to present from, play video from, the other one to be able to tune in and visualize with the students. And we think this will be an enhancement. It's worth noting that while we're doing it now during the pandemic, our technology plan has always called for us to do this. It's just now it's become a necessity and more urgent because of the nature of our learning environment. But that's something that we're working on now to roll out over the next couple of weeks. In addition to that, the Technology Department, aside from providing hardware, technology, network support, also does state reporting. So we provide a lot of data and state reporting through our databases to the state and sometimes it levels up to the federal government. Right now, we're currently working on the exit data calculation for our cohorts and our graduation rate, which we anticipate having to that to Dr. McGee in the very near future. We have our December collections due for special education along with our specialized census reporting, which matches with the general ed census reporting. And all of this ties into all of the state reporting, the assessments, what they publicly publish on their website for our school report cards, if you will. And ultimately, in October and in March, it impacts our funding level, which we won't talk about this evening, I'm sure. But Mr. Perrier is always interested in that particular piece of info. And then the last thing, and I know I'm kind of bouncing around here with my memo, is the Technology Department assisted the Special Ed Department and the elementary level producing report cards and progress notes. And those are being published in the parent portal as we speak. This is the first time we've done that at the elementary level. But I won't, I won't detail anymore on that. I'll defer to Special Ed with their update shortly. So that concludes the technology portion. In terms of facilities, there is a similar report side of the work order system, facilities work order requests. Generally, these reports are a little less informative based on the nature of the work performed. For example, while we try and work around, or we try to utilize the work order system, many times the work performed is not captured there because if a pipe breaks, if we have a leak, we don't tell everyone, well, put the work order in and then we'll respond. We get a phone call, we respond to the pipe leaking and then usually we try and go back and document things. But we did have a 90-day snapshot report. The color coordinating correlates the same as the technology work orders and indicates the work that's performed for the last 90 days. In addition to the work orders, the facility staff are also providing regular standard maintenance and upkeep to the buildings. And as you're going to see, and then, well, you'll hear about the next meeting, we'll have a weather-related response in terms of how we deal with snow and plowing and all of that. The Satisfaction Report, same goes for that. We like to see green on everything. And based on the last 90 days of the responses, we've go back, we've only had three people that were not satisfied. All the other work orders that we did get a response, people were satisfied. Again, green is good and yellow is something we always like to look into. Aside from that, we're just trying to keep the buildings as clean and ready for when school resumes on the 4th. That concludes my update, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Norriani. Any other addition, any comments or questions for our director? If there are none, I make a motion to receive and place on file the technology facilities update. Is there a second? Second by Vice Chair Burke. Back to McGee, will call, please.
Chairman Bourget. Vice Chair Burke. Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I'll ask Dr. Sullivan and Ms. Morrell to give us the special education update. Next and last, Dr. Sullivan and Ms. Morrell to give us the Special Education Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start, and then Mrs. Sullivan will jump in if there's anything that I forget. So the Special Education Department, so far since September, has been hard at work supporting the district's most vulnerable students during this difficult time. Many of our students that have been in distance learning have had the support of these teachers working with them in small groups and individual Google meets, from pre-K to transpro. And the students that have been in-person, in hybrid, or in our self-contained classrooms in person have been working closely with the classroom teacher in that small group, getting the supports that they needed. Most of the district's interactive academic programs that we've been working with, we've worked very closely with Mrs. Ariso and Dr. Holt and Mrs. Agia to make sure that all of the programs that we have for the students are interactive, as well as meeting the students at their academic, individual academic level. So they've been working on CERN, SmartEons, Reading A to Z, those are a few of them. And all of the tools have been adaptive to where the students are and meeting them at their levels, academic level. Also, we have had a lot of parent involvement with our related service providers because our meetings with the students have been in small groups. The service providers have been working with the parents and the students during the Google meet to talk about how they can strengthen their hands with OT or do the physical therapy, things at home. Because a lot of our students are in distance learning, working at home, the students are virtually working with the students with their speech and language. So our therapists are giving the tips and tricks to the parents to help support that. And a lot of parents have been involved in that. And the therapists have stated that they've gotten to know their parents and their students much better in this format. With that stated, our IP meetings have moved into the virtual format, as you know. And this has increased our parent participation for the fact that they don't have to leave work, they can do it right on their, right at their lunch schedule, right at their computer, they can do a telephone conference. And because it's virtual, we're able to submit the paperwork that needs signatures to everybody through DocuHub, which has been a great asset to our department. We've also, with the support of Dr. Sullivan, initiated parent surveys around the district from pre-K to 12. To all students that have IEPs, we've had case managers call to every family to see what they needed for support. If they were in distance learning, what worked well, what didn't work well. And if they requested an IEP meeting, we completed that IEP meeting to help support the student. And that is ongoing. We've completed, I want to say, almost 80% of the population with our case managers. We also, as Mrs. Kapiskas had noted, our safety protocol for our testing have been established for the in-person evaluation. That has been working out very well in the last few weeks. We've had many evaluations completed, and that is ongoing. Once we are in-person, they'll be continuing them in-person, and the students that are distance learning will be coming in with that. And as Mr. Natariani had stated, that our IEP progress notes will be available on the parent portal through Skyward. If for some reason a parent does not have their progress note on there, if they could reach out to their case manager and let us know, but for the most part, they should all be there. And that's my report. Dr. Sullivan, did I miss anything?
No, you didn't miss anything, Dawn. I wanted to add just a couple of comments, though. As most of you know, last month at the high school, we initiated a program to help some of the students that were in the departmentalized classes because they were having so much trouble with the distance learning. And we brought them back a couple of days a week. And it was a program that was put together primarily by Andrew Egan and Lauren Windsor and Jeff Gyo. And they did a really good job putting the program together. The teacher assistants were really the ones that spent the time working with the students. We got a lot of good feedback from the students and from the parents that it helped the students really learn how to do the distance learning so that they can be more successful when we, you know, because we did actually have to go back to it, but we feel like they're better prepared. So that was really nice to see that we found something that was working with them, but we'll probably continue that if we can bring some students back in January. Also, just an update, I think in January, we'll probably start work. I think some of you know that last year, we were chosen by RIDE with one other district, Pawtucket, to help develop a model program for working with students that are on alternate assessment. We were one of two districts in the state that were chosen. And so we're going to start the teacher training on that, I believe, in January. And this is to develop a model for the state of Rhode Island, and then eventually, this might turn into a national model. And the University of Kansas is the one leading it.
Interesting. That's good. Any committee member have any comments for Ms. Morrell or Dr. Sullivan? Hearing none, Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borje.
I'll make, it's a motion or place on file, the Special Education Update. Can I say yes?
Vice Chair Burke.
Yeah.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
I'll second for the record in yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Thank you. Next and last, Mr. Perrier, would you give us the financial update, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. In front of the School Committee this evening is the October 2020 fiscal update. As of October 31st, 2020, the school district is projected to have approximately a $540,000 surplus. And as for some of the revenue details, taxes levied from local governments, governmental units is projected to be $250,000 under budget. The additional $250,000 of funding that was asked for was not approved by the city toward being funded at the fiscal year 20 level. At this time, rental income is projected to be under budget by approximately $170,000. Due to the pandemic, we haven't had any requests for building usage, and we haven't had much traffic in the building at all. For this projection, our state is still at the level originally approved by the state. Since I wrote this update, I have received some additional information on state funding. It was, we were in the area of $61 million. That was what was due to us from the state as part of general fund, local revenues, as well as all our categoricals. It's looking like the state number is going to be a little under $59 million at this time. When you couple that with $4 million in, pardon me, the Receives Repairs Act, we're actually going to be ahead of the game from a revenue standpoint for the fiscal year. So when the fiscal year 21 budget is finished at the state level, I will make those adjustments in my budget projections, and I will update this weekly. Also, the Medicaid reimbursement projection has been reduced due to reduction of billable services with this review. On the expenditure side, all regular salaries are projected to be $153,000 under budget at this time. Substitute salary line is currently projected to be $730,000 under budget. It's been difficult to secure substitutes for in-person learning during the pandemic, which has led to a fiscal savings. Also, due to the move to classrooms being fully virtual for this month, there has been no need for substitutes, also leading to savings. We've also received some additional funding from the state to help subsidize substitutes. So we've really had a lot of money given to us to help assist with the substitute funding. Regular overtime is projected to be $520,000 over budget. This was due to the period that we were paying double time for 1137 employees for the new school committee members. There was a clause in the contract that when we were working in a state emergency, 1137 employees were paid double time. About a month ago, there was an agreement between 1137 and the Woodsacken case department to eliminate that clause. So we are now proceeding to pay normally as we would per the contract. Medical expenses are currently $470,000 under budget. The trend of decreased medical expenses during the pandemic has continued to prove true. Once the pandemic reaches its conclusion, I would anticipate these expenditures returning to a normal level. At this time, no money has been reserved for OPEB expense, which leads to a $400,000 savings. Until there's more clarity on our state aid number, which we have gotten, we will not be funding our OPEB account. Speech therapists are $100,000 over budget at this time. This has been due to the need to reach out to outside contractors, positions that we budgeted for, but have been unable to fill. The district is projected to be $329,000 over budget on tuition to other districts. This has been due to the increase of Woodsacken students choosing to attend other districts to pursue other educational pathways. Property and equipment budget series is projected to be $925,000 over budget. This has been due to the new builders that we bought. We are in the process right now of moving this expense off the books. Our Care Supplemental Impact Fund aid has been approved. And we've begun to move those expenses from the general fund to the grant that's going to cover them. Again, for the new school committee members, we made some purchases earlier this year that weren't quite approved yet by the Department of Ed in terms of CARES Act expenditures. We have received that approval now, so we are slowly in the process of moving those expenses off the general fund to the CARES Act Supportful Aid Fund. And I'm hopeful to have that completed by the end of the calendar year. And this should lead to some additional savings down the road on subsequent fiscal updates. If the committee has any questions at this time, I would like to.
Mr. Perrier, as you make these transfers out of the general fund, obviously, that's going to create income to the general fund. However, you know, the state budget is being approved as we speak. So I would hope that at our January, one of our January meetings, we will have a more solid look at what our budget is and where we stand. As well now, it's a year. We don't know exactly where the state's going to land on the revenue side.
It's, right now, like I said, I think I mentioned before, we were scheduled to make half $61 million, get $61 million in revenue. That's, again, the state aid, general fund, plus our categorical, which is the Special Ed categorical, the ELL categorical. We also received some additional transportation funding from the state as well. It's looking like we're going to be down about $100,000 if everything goes through that was proposed. So we're hopeful that we're not going to have a huge cut to state aid. It's looking promising now. But until they pass everything, everything's finalized, it's at that point we'll be adjusting our.
Correct. Any other, any school committee member have any questions or comments for Mr. Perrier? I'll make a motion and receive and place on file a financial update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yeah.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into unfinished business. We have one item. The discussion, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the vote on the amendments to the Non-Union Benefits Policy for second passage. Are there any comments or questions with regards to this item? Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into new business. And I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the appointments to the school committee subcommittees. We have a second by Dr. McGee. You want to discuss this? We've got you as a listener. Or do you want me to take it?
I can certainly discuss it if you like, I have them right here in front of me.
Very well.
So we have a total of six subcommittees, Finance, Facilities Security, Curriculum, Policy, Health and Wellness, Technology. And then we have two liaison committees, which is the CLAC and the PESLO. So I'm going to begin with Finance. We have Mr. Borje and Mr. Leclerc serving on the Finance Subcommittee. We have Mr. Borje and Mr. Leclerc are also serving on the Facility and Security Subcommittee. We have Mr. Borje and Mrs. Kapiskas serving on Curriculum. Mr. Burke and Mrs. Kapiskas serving on Policy. Mr. Burke and Ms. Costa serving on Health and Wellness. We have Mr. Burke and Ms. Costa serving on Technology. And for the CLAC liaison, we have Mrs. Kapiskas. And for the PESLO liaison, we have Mrs. Kapiskas.
And we are leaving the PAC, the Paris Advisory Committee, open because if it becomes active, then we'll have to assign someone to that. And perhaps we will assign Ms. Costa to that.
I was going to say, I wouldn't mind doing that.
It's all yours. Amy, it'll be all yours when it becomes active. How's that?
Sounds great.
Any discussions, questions about the subcommittees? Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
And the last item on our agenda is just a discussion to initiate the review of the school committee bylaws. When we were getting ready for a special meeting for the other night, I went through the bylaws, and I noted that some of the items are quite old. They were aging better than a bottle of wine. So I thought it might be prudent if we have a complete review, you know, from beginning to end. And I'm going to ask our attorney and her folks to do that and come to the school committee with a new set of bylaws where we can review and approve. And one of the items I think that should be in the bylaws that's not right now is the whole election process for the chair and vice chair. That's not in there. But I'm going to leave that up to you, Sarah, to take a look. But there, and not just look at just the amendments that were made, but take a look at page one all the way to the end. And, you know, if you, you're familiar with other school committees, and if you, you know, make recommendations to our bylaws, I appreciate that. Because each and every year, we should have this review, and we haven't done it in some time. So it's grown cobwebs. So I appreciate that. So in January, if we can have that for our review, I'd appreciate that.
Will do.
Thank you. No other items on our agenda. And I want to say thank you for coming to the meeting. And I welcome Amy Costa. Amy, so nice of you to be on the committee. Also, you, Alan, Alan Leclerc, glad you're joining us. Look forward to the next two years. And we also look forward to Dr. McGee's computer and Chromebook. And, well, maybe, Mr. Perrier, maybe it's the mice. Maybe it's the mice that got to them. So right now, I'll make a motion for adjourn the meeting at 8:31 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. Good night, and stay safe, and don't shovel too much tomorrow.